Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to the town council meetings this evening. Could you all rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, roll call please.
Mr. Dixon? Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mrs. LaFois? Here. Mrs. Cheats? Here. Mayor Kuss?
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was provided to the two newspapers of record on January 5th, 2024. At this point, we'll move to a few swearing in presentations this evening. Michael Walansky Lieutenant, Stephen Schauger Sergeant, and Anthony Vitrono Patrol. Beginning with Lieutenant Walansky.
Mike was born and raised in New York to Margaret and Robert Walansky. He attended Floral Park Memorial High School and studied accounting at Binghamton University before moving to Newton in 1995. He worked as a financial analyst in Princeton and Mountain Lakes before embarking on a career in law enforcement. In January 2001, Mike was sworn in as a full-time police officer by Chief Thomas Sula. He was promoted to sergeant in 2019 under Chief Osborne, taking on responsibilities in firearms investigations, accreditation, compliance, and community outreach programs such as the Youth Corps and Domestic Violence Response Team. Michael married Lisa in 2012, was immediately blessed with two stepsons, Michael and Jeffrey, and together they are proud grandparents to six grandchildren. Now serving as lieutenant and head of operations, Michael considers it his greatest honor to lead the patrol division. He is privileged to work alongside the dedicated officers who courageously protect the public and uphold the trust and safety of the town of Newton with unwavering commitment.
After me. I, Michael Walansky.
I, Michael Walansky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Form all the duties.
Of the office of lieutenant.
Of the office of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, family members, friends, to the esteemed members of the Newton Town Council, Town Manager Russo, Chief DeAnnabelle. It's such a great honor and privilege to be here tonight, but it's also very humbling. It's humbling because of the talented, qualified, and deserving officers I've worked with in the past who have not had the opportunity that I'm being blessed with today. For me, today's not about a celebration of personal achievement, but instead it's about giving testament to the support and guidance I've received throughout the years. So I've, I've left the road after 24 years. The road in the patrol division are places that I've loved, honored, and cherished. They will always be a part of me and always define who I am as a person and as an officer. The position that I am now in, the men who've traveled this road before me, whose footsteps I now follow, Captain Donna Freo, Chief Osborne, lieutenants Monica and Mueller, have all carried the weight of responsibility with great integrity, often operating under the sword of Damocles, balancing leadership with its heavy burdens. You see, these men have set the bar extremely high for me, a bar that I cannot try to meet, but instead a bar that I am obligated to meet. Obligated not only because of their work and efforts, but obligated because of the importance of this position and the importance this position once meant to a patrolman in need of guidance. Last but definitely not least, and always first in my heart, is my lovely wife Lisa, whose support and dedication has and always will be my greatest of inspirations. So in conclusion, I would like to thank everybody in attendance today, but I'd also like to give a very special thanks to the powers that be and to the ultimate power of being for giving me this most amazing, wonderful, quite honestly, pretty groovy opportunity. Thank you.
Right, next up, Stephen Schauger. Stephen moved to Newton in 2004 and attended Newton High School, where he excelled in sports. He went on to William Patterson, continuing his athletic career while earning a bachelor's in sociology. He worked locally as a manual laborer until joining the Newton Police Department in 2018, where he has worked in the patrol division dedicating himself to serving the community with professionalism and integrity.
Speed after me. I, Stephen Schauger.
I, Stephen Schauger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of sergeant.
The office of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I gotta follow that one up. I just want to thank the town manager, Mr. Russo, mayor Kuss, and the rest of the town council. I want to thank my friends and family for supporting me in this challenging profession. Without it, I probably wouldn't be able to survive in this. And then most importantly, I want to thank the men and women to my right throughout the room, active and retired civilian dispatchers or civilian employees. It's not lost on me that nothing in our profession gets done alone, and I've had a lot of support from you guys throughout my career. If not for that, I wouldn't be up here. I wouldn't have this opportunity. So thank you, guys.
Next up, Anthony Vitrono. Anthony brings with him a wealth of professional experience and a deep commitment to service. Raised in Vernon, he has always been driven by a strong sense of discipline and teamwork, which was cultivated during his years as a lifelong athlete and graduate of Vernon Township High School in 2014. After high school, he continued his academic journey at Montclair State University, earning a bachelor's in business administration in 2018. His professional career initially took him into the fields of sales and IT, where he honed his skills in communication, problem solving, and leadership. Alongside his work in these industries, he also served as a high school football coach, demonstrating his dedication to mentoring young athletes and fostering a spirit of collaboration. In September 2024, he graduated from the Passay County Police Academy with a deep-rooted desire to protect and serve. He has since been honored to join the Newton PD. Anthony is both proud and excited to continue his journey, serving the people of Newton with integrity, dedication, and a commitment to making a positive impact on the community. Mayor?
Hi, Anthony Vitrono.
Hi, Anthony Vitrono.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Form all of the duties.
Of the office of patrol.
Of the office of patrolmen.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Same thing, words?
Yeah, so I just found out to speak about an hour ago. Obviously, I'm not going to follow that up. Just wanted to say thank you to everyone, my friends and family, the town council, everyone who works for the town. It's truly been an honor. Ever since I first sat in the interview room, I knew this is the place where I wanted to be. This is the place I want to work. And this is the place where I want to have a successful career. So it's truly an honor. It's, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. And again, thank you to everyone standing over there, actively retired, for paving the way. So thank you.
If I may. Good evening, everyone. First, thank you to the Newton Town Council, Mayor Kuss, Town Manager Thomas Russo, for your unwavering support of the Newton Police Department. It is my honor to stand before you today as we celebrate the well-deserved promotions of two outstanding individuals who have shown exceptional dedication, leadership, and service to our community. First, we recognize Michael Walansky, who has been promoted to the rank of police lieutenant. Michael's hard work, integrity, and commitment to the safety, well-being of those he serves have made lasting impacts on our police department. He is not only a role model to his colleagues, but a true leader who embodies the values we strive for every day. Michael, this promotion is a testament to your dedication and your ability to lead with both strength and compassion. We are excited to see you continue to guide our team towards even greater success. Next, we honor Stephen Schauger as he steps into the role of police sergeant. Stephen has consistently demonstrated his exceptional skills, work ethic, and ability to inspire those around him. Whether in the field or in the department, Stephen approaches each challenge with a calm and thoughtful demeanor. He has earned the trust of his colleagues and the respect of our community. And we know that he will continue to rise to the occasion in his leadership role. Michael and Stephen, this is a significant achievement, and we look forward to watching you both grow and lead our department with the same dedication and excellence you've always shown. We are also proud to welcome a new member to our team and our family, patrolman Anthony Vitrono. This is a special moment for all of us as we continue to build a strong and dedicated department that serves and protects our community with honor and pride. Anthony, today marks the beginning of a new chapter in your career, and we are excited to see the passion and dedication you will bring to the role. From your training to your commitment to excellence, you've shown that you have the heart of a true public servant. As you take this oath and officially become part of this department, know that you are not only joining a team of officers, but a family that will support you every step of the way. The road ahead will come with challenges, but I have no doubt that you will approach each one with courage, integrity, and the same determination that has brought you to this moment today. We are confident that you will make positive impacts on this department and the community we serve. Congratulations, Lieutenant Walansky, Sergeant Schauger, and Patrolman Vitrono.
House Member Cheats?
Congratulations to all of you. As most of you know, this is one of the best perks of being on the town council or being the mayor and getting to see the the police officers that, you know, climb their way through the ranks here at Newton Police. And to welcome our newest members, you've picked one of the best police departments to join in the state of New Jersey. So congratulations on a wise decision. And Lieutenant Walansky, you get the Academy Award because I have been part of swearing ins and promotion ceremonies for probably more than 30 years, and that was by far the best. So congratulations.
It's wonderful. It's always wonderful to see the council chambers so full and I want to say congratulations first to Patrolman Vitrono. Many of your colleagues have heard me say this over and over again. I truly believe you are joining the best police department in the state of New Jersey and beyond. This is a department that is professional, holds the highest level of integrity and honor. It's a department that's driven community first and foremost, embraces technology, is a leader, and is an example for all the surrounding police departments. Truly embodies a commitment to excellence day in and day out. Wonderful examples of servant leadership, community policing, and I could go on and on. And we welcome you to truly this family of men and women that are dedicated, both those in uniform, those that have led before, and the entire, all the departments that that support dispatch, all of our first responders. You just can't come to a better place. So welcome to the town of Newton. Sergeant Schauger, 2018. I feel like it was just yesterday we were swearing you in, right? And here we are promoting you, and I know that you come from a long family of people that have also served our community and we are happy to see you progressing in your career and know that you will continue to grow into these leadership roles that, that, that you're coming into. Lieutenant Walansky, I have known you for a long time and at least 2008, I guess now. For me, you've always been an officer that takes pride in your work, respects every day the badge, and wears on your sleeve the honor that you hold in your heart, love for the town of Newton. And you've always been someone that I could go to with a question and certainly has been a person that takes a lot of pride in bringing along those that you supervise. And you'll probably get embarrassed by this, but for several months, actually, our personal physical trainers in the audience tonight, which is a testament to, I think, Mike, you and the support that the community brings, but we had the same PT schedule for, I don't know, six, eight months, nine months, 10 months. And so we were oftentimes in a filled physical therapy office jointly talking about the awesome things that happened in the town of Newton. And it's, it comes with the job. You guys elect me so I can be up here as a wonderful proponent of the town of Newton, but you just would always talk about the town of Newton and the department that you worked with, and I'm sharing this because you guys weren't in the room, right? You all weren't in the room, but Lieutenant Walansky was the first one to tell anybody that would listen about how awesome the town of Newton is, what was going on here, how honored he was to work with the men and women that he works with and that he would rather be in no other place. So I share that as a, as kind of anecdotally because the people in the room, you know, wouldn't necessarily know that because when you're in uniform, I think you have to show up a certain way, but it's what you do when you're not in uniform. And that really kind of shows the character, and I think that this police department is, whether you are in your dress uniform or not, you're always showing up in uniform. And that's what I have experienced in working with each and one of you, each and one of every one of you, some I know better than others, and I just couldn't be more proud of this police department. So I'll stop. It's so great to see so many retired officers here too. It makes me feel a little old though, if I'm being honest. But congratulations and thank you all for being here.
House Member Cheats joins us online from Vermont.
Diglio.
Diglio, my apologies. Yes, Diglio. It's online. Sandy, do you have any words you'd like to share?
Sandy, did you have any comments?
No worries, no worries. So there's not much left to say, but you know, in my experience, you know, I joined Newton EMS when I was in high school, and believe it or not, 19 years ago today, or you know, June, great. But over that amount of time, you know, I've, I've developed a very strong intimate connection with, you know, the members of our police department. Lieutenant Walansky is no exception, and the, the character of Lieutenant Walansky that I've come to know over the past 19 years was definitely exhibited this evening with the speech. So if not, your reputation, your reputation preceded you and you fulfilled that. So thank you very much. It was also an interesting evening tonight because not only was I able to swear on these fine three gentlemen, but I actually met Steve Schauger back in seventh grade. He moved into town, and I was actually the one who gave him the tour of the school. So, you know, it's age my teens does. I still know my directions. It's really neat to, you know, watch our lives kind of grow up and see everyone accomplishing, accomplishing a lot of the last things within the audience here. So it's, it's really neat to have an experience that was where I stayed in and Anthony, welcome, welcome aboard, welcome to town. I'll see you out there. And generally, when we have these type of events, we usually take five or 10 minutes of a recess just for families to take pictures and kind of, you know, liaise and enjoy the camaraderie that we have here. Exciting meeting planned afterwards, lots of karate classes, appointments for paying bills tonight. So if you want to stay afterwards, if you're old, you're welcome. We'll get some more chairs, but we understand if you don't want to. We'll take you more, are we set right now? We'll be here about 10 minutes.
Michelle, if he talking about when he's in seventh grade, now I really feel.
You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. We have a wonderful lobby, it's five o'clock somewhere, heat works.
Well, they can stay.
There are no refreshments.
Oh, thank you. I could tell.
Of course, it's Michael's brother.
Congratulations, take care.
Big D. Little D.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, nothing, nothing, nothing back.
Who wants to hear this? Nobody.
Did we hear Sandy or she's still on?
Sandy, are you still on? Thanks, chief.
I see. Is Sandy still on?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
All right. Wow. Cleared the room. No offense.
Walter didn't even say.
All right. Now you gotta leave it open for them. If somebody comes, because it locks.
It's not too loud.
It'll skedaddle.
So. Try to speak loud, I don't know if it's going to be an issue, but don't worry, because this microphone is not working.
Oh, there goes.
Oh, it works, but it does record low when I was listening to her. As I say, you want to move Helen's over a little?
I'll just press and hold it, it's fine. Finger workout. Okay.
I can hear you in the mic, so.
All right. Sorry, I'm pulling it back up. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the executive meeting minutes from November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the town manager's annual review.
I'll offer the minutes from November thirteenth, executive meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Diglia?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
Yes. Now entertain a motion to approve the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November twenty-fifth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Diglia?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and to please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last names for the record. As is customary, we'll begin with anyone in person who would like to speak. Feel free to step up to the microphone. Otherwise, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to have, like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone in either form, we will close the first section. And move to a discussion from our town planner on affordable housing actions.
Mayor, I asked Jessica to come speak with you. We provided a memo dated December fifth about the town's fourth round obligations. So I wanted Jessica to come in and talk about the background, what the obligation is, next steps, and then see if you agree with her recommendations. Just for you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. So we are embarking on round four of affordable housing obligations. By way of background, the prior round started in nineteen eighty-seven. The town had an obligation at that time of twenty-four units, which was met through group homes, assisted living facilities, and a couple other programs. In round three, it was a really long round, it went from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty-twenty-five. So there were various changes throughout that time period. Ultimately, the town ended up with a seventy-two unit obligation for present need, which is rehabilitation of existing units. The town runs a rehabilitation program through its Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and then a prospective need of eighty-three units. That was met through our Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that was approved by the courts in May of two thousand sixteen. But at the beginning of the third round, the town had a much higher obligation. So through that process, we created several programs through redevelopment plans, through some overlay zones and other programs. We also had the sixty-five unit age-restricted building built on Spring Street. So through all of those, we did create quite a few units through zoning and through actual unit completion. So now, as we go into the fourth round, we actually are carrying extra credits essentially that were created during round three. Even though our obligation dropped towards the end of round three, we kept all of the mechanisms in place, so that going into round four, we're in good shape. So essentially, what happened was the affordable housing was moved from the Council on Affordable Housing to a new program called the Dispute Resolution Program that's run through the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. There is new legislation passed in March that created various deadlines for communities to comply with round four. So on October eighteenth, DCA issued the fourth round obligations for all of the state. Communities are able to accept that obligation or present an alternative obligation. So I'll just talk about what that means for Newton. Newton's obligation for that rehab or present need was forty-five units. And just keep in mind that that's something that's pretty easily answered by having a rehabilitation program in place. And then the prospective need, which is really the new unit need, which is more difficult at times to address, was seventy-two units. So in order to come up with that calculation, the legislation had three different factors that went into how that was calculated. One was an income factor, essentially how much the income is, the average income in the community, and how much higher that is than the lowest income community within the region. There's a non-residential commercial development, so the percentage of new non-residential development within the community for the region in the last ten years. And then the final factor was a factor called land capacity factor. And in my opinion, that was the one factor that is, I guess you can dispute or look at and determine something different potentially than what DCA came up with. Because the income factor by the statute was based on American Community Survey information, which is census data. That's pretty well set. The non-residential development factor was set by DCA standards, that's also pretty well set. Whatever was built was built. So the land capacity factor is something that you could look at and say, they calculated land that we essentially don't have. But for Newton, they said the land capacity factor was zero. So they basically said the community's built out. They didn't have some, you know, park or something that they thought was, you know, bacon or some error that was made. So in my opinion, what that really says is that we're not going to be able to get that number lower, even if we were to go to the dispute resolution program and propose something different. So in those cases, I think it's better to just accept the number, fly under the radar, get through the process as quickly as possible. That's what we've done in the past, and that's, I think, served the town well. And, you know, not having any issues with affordable housing or objections. So, and essentially, like I said, through the last round, and we're carrying over a hundred and eighteen credits right now, and our obligation's seventy-two. So it's really a matter of revising our prior Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, just making sure that all the numbers work. I mean, there may be a few tweaks here and there, but I don't envision any new large overlay zones or anything like that. And I think it's just accounting for what we have and going forward. We, the town council needs to adopt the numbers by January thirty-first. So whenever your first working meeting is in January, you would adopt that by resolution. And then in conjunction with the Planning Board, adopt a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. I think it's all very doable, I think the town's in really good shape. I've been working, you know, at this for the entire time that affordable housing has been in place and created a lot of units, which is, you know, I think a testament to the town. And that's why we're in good shape now.
So Jessica, just to make sure I've got this right, so our, I'm looking at the spreadsheet too that we were sent. So our present need is forty-five, or our maintenance need, and then our prospective need is seventy-two, right? We're carrying over a hundred and eighteen credits, and so there's not really anything other than the adoption of what you've outlined, anything that we have to do right now. Like, we're not sitting in a deficit position where all of a sudden we're like, we need to go out and start to look for affordable housing units. Right?
No, I don't think so. I mean, there's, there's a few things that, you know, we just have to calculate. There's always a cap on senior. So while the building on Spring Street is good, we kind of have to apply. You know, fifteen credits went to round three, and twenty-two credits will go to round four, and then there'll be another carryover. So with that carryover, you know, I think we still hit the seventy-two.
Okay.
But, you know, if we have to find a couple of units, but I don't think, I don't even think we will have to do that.
Okay, and we have some open redevelopment parcels. So I would anticipate that with some development, we will not have an issue with meeting the affordable housing requirements.
Right, right. I mean, if you have upcoming redevelopment, the policy has always been, if you're doing residential, you know, in a place where, you know, you think that it would be beneficial to have some affordable housing, you would include that in the, in the plan. We have a couple of plans out there that have affordable housing set aside in them.
Yep.
You know, we would just leave everything in place, essentially. And then forward from there.
Do recall that proactively, we were giving developers the option to build the units or to deposit to our COA trust funds. I believe we have a balance of over six hundred and thirty. uh, COA trust funds, um, and believe we have a balance of over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's in there. How does that get figured into the obligations or how does that get accounted for?
The trust fund?
The trust fund.
So part of what we would do is create a spending plan. So, uh, we have a spending plan from round three. And what we would do is update that in order to, you know, hit whatever priorities that the town has in terms of identifying places to spend the money. Uh, in the past, we've, we've spent it on rehabilitation projects, so that, that rehab program for the present need. So if someone's furnace breaks and they're low income, they can come in and get a new furnace, for instance, something like that, or a new roof. Uh, help support e- existing low-income residents. And then you can also, we've, you know, contributed some funding towards the RPM building. You know, so that you can have funding for that, you can contribute to uh, new development, you know, there's all kinds of things you can, you can do with that money as long as it's going to affordable housing.
And I think, oh, I was gonna say, I, I would like to, as we're updating the plan, look to see if there's an opportunity to support perhaps some of our nonprofits that are um, in the community. I think we just did that recently with the new build of the group home on
It was Katie's house.
Nope, the one on, um,
She was thinking of Madison.
Madison.
I don't think that was, uh, that it ended up being incredibly, but I don't think we put any money towards that.
Only because, uh, you know, we have a number of nonprofits that do have residential housing and, and my experience has been, at least for the organization I work for, we help the municipality meet their COA obligations.
Oh, yeah.
Because of the housing units that we have. So, um, you know, uh, I would imagine that there perhaps could be some capital improvements that some of the nonprofits that are helping us also to support our COA obligations. Um, whether it's a grant opportunity or something that, like, that we could establish.
Within the last year, I, we, we did provide to Katie's house. They're not built, but they purchased that Donald Avenue. I think it is a rehab that, I think it was our last use of the, the trust fund.
Right. I would imagine for existings, I mean, that, you know, there might be some capital improvements that.
Yeah, the town's helped, I think Katie's House, Community Options. Uh, so, yeah, over, over time, there's a couple of SCAR group homes. And certainly you can allocate, and essentially what we do is just create a budget like you do for the town. And then you just, you can allocate funds into the different programs, and then when people come in, you can spend the funds on, on those programs.
Great.
And, um, you know, things, you can even target, you know, I know Samaritan Inn has some, you know, homeless, you know, apartments for homeless families and things like that, so. And there's, there's some good, good things that you could contribute the funding to, for sure.
Councilmember Diglio, any questions?
My one concern, um, in the future, round five, round six, um, Newton is literally three square miles and we're fairly built up. So how is that going to, uh, affect us in the future?
So over time, essentially what happens to most communities is obviously they get built out and there's, there's isn't any additional space for development. And at that point, you can do what's called a vacant land adjustment, which basically says we're out of land at this point. Uh, and then the obligation kind of gets put into, put to the side and, you know, what's called unmet need. And then if you do something like a redevelopment project, then you're required to add, you know, zone for affordable housing within the redevelopment, if it's residential. I mean, if you're doing a, you know, commercial or industrial, you don't have to do a set aside, but that's, um, right now, we're not obligated to do it because we have other places. So, you know, sometimes there's developments that go in and people are like, well, why isn't there any affordable housing? And because the town still has the opportunity to decide where it's gonna go. A lot of communities, once you get built out and there's only one parcel left or you're doing redevelopment, then you're obligated to have that set aside. So that's essentially what happens going forward in round five or round six.
Let's see, one has any other thoughts, but yeah.
Yep, yep, it sounds good. All right, thank you. I'm great.
Sir, uh, note from our recycling coordinator, Deb Danielson. She wants us to mention that the town signed a pilot with Skuma to dispose of styrofoam. This enables us to deliver to them number six stamped styrofoam, rigid, not food container thickness or anything that's thin and bendable. The rigid styrofoam will be melted into blocks and sent to a larger disposal end market. They currently have a machine which enables them to perform this task. We are also accepting light bulbs. From appliance size to twelve-foot-long ballast, we will receive fifty cents to a dollar a light bulb. This includes CFL, non-CFL, xenon, and LED. There will be an information pamphlet coming out soon. Questions from residents, they can call DPW or email recycling@newtondpw.com.
We're kind of, we're, uh, building quite the recycling empire over there.
Yes, we are. That's what we're doing.
State of the art.
Gonna build bigger, better.
Yep.
Could you bring in a sample of what styrofoam that?
Well.
When you buy a TV.
Buy the big TV for Kenny. And it comes in the big thick styrofoam for the seventy-five inch LG at Costco, then you'll know.
All right.
Number two. I want to thank the chamber and everyone that helped out with the holiday parade. Show for the weather. Number three, I want to thank everybody who helped out with the tree lighting, Santa at all, a lot of fun, and Winter Wonderland, which was this room, was great, Kimberly Roy and everybody. Offices will close at noon on Friday, December thirteenth for the annual holiday soiree. Offices will be closed Tuesday, December twenty-fourth and Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. So Merry Christmas to everybody who celebrates. And also to those that celebrate Happy Hanukkah and Happy Kwanzaa. Offices will close at three P M on Tuesday, December thirty-first. And closed January first, Wednesday. Happy New Year to everybody, from my family to yours. And our reorganization of the governing body will be Wednesday, January fifteenth at high noon here at the municipal building. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Diglio. Councilmember.
First of all, uh, first of all, I would like to congratulate Michael, Stephen, and Anthony on their, um, positions that they just got. Um, I wasn't able to speak earlier because I wasn't part of the panel. And so, um, thank you, Tom, for making me part of the panel again. I do want to say thank you to the DPW, to the police, to all the participants that took place in the holiday parade. I do feel that it was a great success. Many people comment about it. So I want to thank them because I know DPW is up there at the crack of dawn with me and we are literally there until it's over. So, um, a special thanks to DPW and to all the police. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Teetz?
Um, I'll just add to, uh, you know, the parade, I, I did have to call in some favors for the weather and the tree lighting as well, but I think it all worked out well. And, uh, I think having the setup inside, um, is a nice, um, a, a nice way to, for people to warm up and still participate in the activities. Lots of letters were going on out to Santa, out in the foyer area, and, uh, I think everyone had a good time. Lots of compliments. So, good job by all those involved, um, especially the rec committee. And, yeah, the parade, as always, uh, was a great parade. Sandy did a nice job. Um, you know, a lot, thanks to all the fire departments and all the, uh, agencies and groups that participated. Some cute little trucks and floats and, uh, farm animals and the dancers at the end, but I'm still not sure what their name is, but I heard they're coming to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, so that's exciting. Um, and, uh, JP, I know this is your last meeting as mayor. Um, but isn't it? Is it? Oh, okay, I'm like.
We're gonna have so many special meetings.
Please let me know, but, um, I just wanted to say it's been, you know, a pleasure, uh, working with you this past year as the mayor and, uh, you know, you did forget me on Admin Assistant Day, but it's okay, um.
We showed you.
Yeah, I would get a lot of the emails, so I would just forward them on. But, um, I, you did an exceptional job and you were a, a great focal point for the residents. I know you got lots of compliments as well on social media and when I see people, you know, they all have nice things to say about you, so uh, look forward to another four years with you as well. So congratulations. That is all.
Yes, I'll, uh, just echo everyone's comments, uh, about the holiday parade. I thought it was, um, it was a great turnout, the sun was shining, um, lots of great participants. Um, and then many people stayed around, at least I saw, uh, for Small Business Saturday, which is good, on Spring Street. And, uh, I, you know, the small businesses are the backbone certainly of our community, um, and I know that they appreciate all the social media posts, Tom. I just wanted to specifically say, um, Kimberly doing a great job of, of rotating through, hi- highlighting, you know, various businesses, what they saw, what they do, encouraging people to, to go in. And I know it's appreciated. I hear it from the business owners. Um, I was unable to attend the tree lighting, unfortunately, um, it was our children's holiday party at the shelter. Um, but I did have, uh, um, a, 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 some assistance with, uh, live video coverage and pictures being sent to me, so I know a good time was had by all and um, the room here looked beautiful. So thank you for everyone that participated in that and the rec committee, et cetera. Uh, the mayor and I have a planning board meeting on, um, December eighteenth. Um, so we'll report back on that, um, as applicable. I wanted to also just take a moment to recognize the passing of Jack Smalley, who for so many years was our caretaker and um, at Morris Lake and, um, that was a passion for him. I understand, Tom, you would get his messages about the, the water levels, the weekly water levels at the lake and all that was going on there. Um, so, you know, just want to honor his years of service to the town. I wanted to also mention that this Saturday at eleven A M is our annual holiday senior luncheon here at Town Hall. So that's this Saturday, December fourteenth at eleven A M. Um, uh, I also wanted to acknowledge that this is, uh, GP's last meeting as our mayor and I'm sure we'll have lots of nice comments for you at our reorg meeting, JP. So if there's anything special that you want us to say, make sure you send us your notes.
As Terry might know from the past year or past four years, I'd never send notes.
No, I'm just teasing you. Um, and then because this is our last meeting of the year, um, I, I wanted to wish everyone, um, a blessed and peaceful Christmas and a Hanukkah. They are coinciding this year on the calendar um, and the upcoming holidays and that, you know, hopefully, um, we're all able to gather with special friends and family to remember the true reason for the season and we have so much to be grateful for here in the town of Newton and, uh, I hope everybody just has a wonderful continued holiday season. Uh, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And I'll just add, it was a great year. Well, now move to our ordinances. Uh, we have a second reading, public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, which is an ordinance to establish minimum and maximum salaries and wages for officers and employees of the town of Newton for a calendar year twenty twenty-five. And I hereby open this to the public. If anyone would like to speak, please step forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Not seeing anyone in either form, we'll close the hearing to the public and I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three. Call off for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Now move to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council will be approved by one motion. Will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So Russo, if you would not mind a rundown, please.
Yes, sir. Two eighty-six, Public Defender for twenty twenty-five. Two eighty-seven is the approval of the new employee handbook. Two eighty-eight, credits to water and sewer. Two eighty-nine, shared service with Stillwater for Animal Control. Two ninety, shared service, Branchville Borough Animal Control. Two ninety-one, authorizes the mayor to conduct ceremonial proceedings from January one through January fifteenth. Reorg. Two ninety-two is the annual sale of Brian to other municipalities. Two ninety-three, annual appointment of Adam Voe to Sussex County Solid Waste Advisory. Two ninety-four, annual appointment of Michael Edward Shenko to Sussex County Water Quality Policy Advisory. Two ninety-five, Public Agency Compliance Officer. Two ninety-six, Town Manager for National Organization on Disability. Two ninety-seven, Keith Mitchell for Risk Management. Twenty twenty-five. Two ninety-eight, my appointment for Fund Commissioner for Statewide Insurance. Twenty twenty-five, two ninety-nine, Municipal Prosecutor in a Fair and Open Manner Award. Three hundred, James Palmico as the town's alternate prosecutor. Three oh one. John Gray as the alternate public defender. Three oh two, designates Deputy Custodian of Public Records. Three oh three, resolution rejecting all proposals for Phase Two Sanitary Sewer Rehab Rebid. Three oh four, authorizes us to negotiate for the aforementioned Phase Two Project. Three oh five, cancellation of taxes, block four dot zero two, lot twenty. Three oh six, restates the agreement with the municipal court judge. Three oh seven is an execution of a Treatment Works Permit Application. Three oh eight is an approval of an extension for waste hauling and disposal service, sludge hauling. Three oh nine is a resolution with Suburban for consulting services for water and sewer. Three ten, transfers. Three eleven, bills and vouchers, and recently added, uh, three twelve. Authorized cancellation of interest on taxes, block ten dot zero one, lot four dot zero two. That's from the CMFL.
Thank you. Are there any items that councilman would like to remove for separate discussion and go? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will offer the consent agenda as presented.
And I will second consented.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes, except to resolution two eighty-seven, as I didn't have the opportunity to actually read both the old and the new books.
Mrs. LaFaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Will you abstaining on check number one, two, one, four, five? Yes, otherwise.
Wait, so I'm sorry, was Councilwoman Diglio abstaining then from two eighty-seven or?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, okay.
Well, I move to our second public session. If anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand. Now, move to the second council amended or comment section. And are there any, uh, final comments to be made?
Yeah, Mayor, the last thing I just wanted to note, um, was, again, since this is the, uh, last meeting of the year, is, um, a thank you to, uh, Tom and all of the staff and employees and volunteers that work, uh, day in and day out on behalf of the town of Newton. I know we recognized the police department here earlier with, um, the promotions of Lieutenant Wulansky and Sergeant Shagger and the, uh, swearing-in of Patrolman Vitrano. Um, but, uh, I know we don't talk a lot about the monthly reports, but when you take a look at the monthly reports and look at all the work that's, that's done and fees collected and applications followed up on, I just want to, Tom, if you'll extend our thanks and appreciation to the staff. Um, I know we have a holiday party on Friday. I'm not sure that I'll be able to make it, but just want you guys to know that I appreciate you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just, uh, one quick reminder also on Saturday is wreaths across America. Um, and that is at noon at the my gosh, the name escaped me, what they call the yeah, what they call the cemetery.
Newton Cemetery?
Not at the Newton Cemetery. It's at the No, it will come to me. I'll share it on social media or something.
So that's at noon, um, on Saturday, Michelle. I think we're gonna be here for the senior lunch.
Newton Burial Ground. Sorry, that was, what was escaping me. I could tell you how to get there. I couldn't think of the it's called, but yes.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just like to wish everyone a very happy and holy, um, holidays for this year.
Thank you. Well, I'm last and I don't have any other comments, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved at eight twelve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any abstaining? Have a good night.
Thank you.